Tom Hagland.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Five, six present.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Director Blacklance is here now too. Okay, we're gonna start with the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Fantastic. Here we go, a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Start out with district recognitions.
Tonight, we congratulate the Warrior Boys soccer team on finishing their season as the Section 8AA section runners-up. So congratulations to them.
Very good. So yeah. Thank you. Public input, is there anyone who wanted to come before the board tonight and talk to us about anything? Lana. What's your name?
Andrew Mendez.
Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew Mendez.
Mendez. Okay, and we have a three-minute rule here.
Yes.
We don't go into complaints or allegations against any employee. So, go ahead.
Good evening, members. My name is Andrew Mendez. I'm currently a senior at Brainerd High School and the co-president of the Aspire Initiative. According to the most recent IPCC report, a study done by two-hundred-and-thirty-six scientists from across the world, if we are not carbon neutral by 2050, abrupt climate change will happen, causing catastrophic damage. The oceans by 2100 will be too acidic and warm to sustain our current fishing industry, which is critical for not only the food security of billions of people, but also job security for millions more. Right now, fires burn through California and Los Angeles jeopardizing thousands of homes. And according to the National Interagency Fire Center, there's been a general increase in the destruction of wildfires since 1980. Members, we are watching the beginning of the end. We are now able to see the next mass extinction as it's happening before our own very eyes. By the end of my life, I will see millions, if not billions, of people being forced to relocate due to abrupt climate change. And my children will more than likely watch the beginning of the human race start to die. We must take every action possible to combat this, even if it won't affect us directly, because it will affect billions in the near future. And this is our last chance to try to stop it. I'm a leader in the Aspire Initiative, a student-led group that aspires to create positive change that will help combat climate change. Members, we believe the best way that we can help combat climate change in our community is to have solar panels placed on the new building. We are committed to having solar panels placed and are willing to work with you to have this happen. This is the perfect time to implement solar panels, as they are not only a way to help combat climate change, but they are much more cost-effective than what we currently do. Electricity bills have been steadily rising 2.2% a year, but solar panels by comparison are the cheapest source of energy on the planet and stay at a flat rate once they are installed. Many other schools in our region have already taken the step towards a sustainable future, and they are seeing greater savings than initially expected. Now, just a small portion of us who support having solar panels showed up, me and two others that are in the audience. Members, your constituency has spoken, and I believe you should follow. So will you help us and allow solar panels to be placed on the new building? And if not, why? And what can we do to convince you?
Great, thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
Is there anybody else who wanted to come forward tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right along here. I wanted to mention too that we have kind of a short agenda tonight, and with some other conflicts with the concert downstairs and everything, so we're gonna try and keep it moving along here. Damian, are you gonna give us a project update?
Coming up, Scott and Kyle.
Scott and Kyle. Well, we got all kinds of guys.
Didn't come up on the screen, did you guys have it? Do you guys see this on the screen? Oh, there it is. Okay. No patience, I'm sorry. All right, here's our project update for October 28th, school board meeting. Discussion topics, introductions, project updates, including the high school Mendali plumbing plan review. We're gonna review the existing courtyard stormwater piping issue. And then, there's a Harrison change order review that's gonna take place. Reviewing change order event number 10, proposal request number four, including window shades, flooring, sinks, and structural. So first, we'll start with project updates.
How about introductions?
Or introductions, I'm sorry.
I think we got a new person here today.
Let me just slide forward.
Sure.
Does that other mic work there too?
Good evening. Mark Needham with ICS, recently joined the Brainerd team here. I will be the project manager for the Lowell and Riverside Elementary Projects. Quick background on me, I came from a general contractor where I worked on corporate facilities, healthcare, sports and entertainment, and some federal contracting.
Thank you.
So Mark is joining our team. I think we have Kyle Walters and then also Scott, what more you familiar faces, of course. But Mark has joined our team. He's gonna oversee Riverside and Lowell. So, we're very excited to have him. All right, update on the Brainerd High School. Area 3 and 1 footings are complete. Area 2 excavations are underway. East parking lot area is being grubbed, backfilling and preparing for steel erection. And Area 3 and 1, MDH and Mendali Plan Reviews are complete. And the Mendali Plumbing Review path forward has been identified.
If you'll notice in the lower right-hand corner of the slide with the red lines there, the existing condition is something that's very similar to that, except that it's 12-inch leading to the collection and then 16-inch going underneath the existing G-link. Through Mendali, we have to bring up the code. We brought this to oversight's attention here last week. This is the path forward is to replace that existing 16-inch line with a 24-inch Schedule 40 PVC line. And in order to do that, we will likely have to excavate a good portion of the G-link. We're still working through, right now, those final designs. We just got the updated mechanical designs, and civil designs are in tomorrow morning, and then that will give us a better understanding of the costs that's gonna be associated with this. And additionally, Tim Ramorth from WSN was able to connect with our plan reviewer at the state Minnesota Department of Labor Industry, and she was agreeable to looking at an alternative design option. So, that might lessen the costs, and we'll know more information on that tomorrow.
Good.
Any questions?
How were you made aware of this, this change that was different than what you had brought forward earlier? What came about that made you aware that this change might have to happen?
This was a result of the plan review comments, so we sent in our mechanical civil roof plans, and they're reviewed by the state to make sure that they're meeting or exceeding the code requirements. This rain leader was identified as an area of concern by the state, which prompted initial or additional design considerations to meet the current plumbing code.
Perfect. So, if I understand right, we were gonna use existing plumbing?
That's correct. There's an existing 16-inch ducted iron pipe that goes underneath G-link, connects to a storm structure, and then leads down the hill. By the football fields, there's a big stormwater holding ponds there. All that will remain. We just, with the new 2015 plumbing code, we didn't meet the flow rates that were required. Even though, you know, we're not adding any additional volume to that, it is, we have to bring that pipe up to code, because we are tying to it. We're hoping to be grandfathered, because this is a pretty significant change in order to get that pipe in the ground.
But you're going to get some information tomorrow, then?
That's correct. If we'll be allowed to pursue an alternative design, which would be to jack and, potentially jack and bore, which would stick a large metal sleeve through the ground. And then, instead of having to excavate out from above, we just run the pipe inside of this jacketed pipe. Typically, it's not allowed, but due to the undue hardship caused by this change, it's something that's gonna be considered, or potentially will be considered.
So it's the state that has to approve that?
That's correct.
Do you think it'll be grandfathered?
It will not be grandfathered, no.
Oh.
But, the alternative design is what we would be pursuing, which would allow us to use a jack and bore technique, instead of doing an open trench, which is required by the Minnesota Plumbing Board.
Scott, I'm sorry, Scott, did you mention a cost, or what's the cost related to it?
Until we have all the plans in and we can do a detailed estimate, I wouldn't be comfortable giving you a cost at this point.
The jack and the boring would be cheaper, though?
It would be, because it requires less deconstruction of the existing building above it.
Less time, too, I suppose.
Why would they not allow us to do that? Why?
It's now, it's, the code's black and white. There's very little gray area in it, so if it doesn't meet the code...
What we would get from it would be just as good as if we trenched.
Correct, that's our position. That's correct.
Need Reed and I to go talk to him?
It could come to that, but not right now. Any other questions?
So you'll keep us informed at the next board meeting?
That's correct.
And the project oversight?
At the next project oversight.
Okay.
And I know I asked you guys this two weeks ago, but how is the cold weather now gonna affect the performing here at center? Are you still gonna get all the footings in?
Yeah, through the scheduling, there was gonna be winter conditions that they'd have to contend with anyways, so those provisions are in place. We have blankets down, heaters for the concrete, things of that nature. We'll have Tempe going once the seal goes up. You'll start sealing steel coming up, or coming up from the ground next week.
So are we on schedule with the high school today?
Today, our footings and foundations are about five days behind, but as mentioned previously, Rice Lake has been working overtime weekends. They're doing everything to keep us on track for hitting our pre-cast date of 11:25. Steel's coming two weeks ahead of schedule, so even though footings and foundations are five days, six days behind, we're moving other things up in the schedule to try to get ahead of that.
Will the board, will you be able to communicate out with the board as a whole, what the state's decision is in terms of which route you're gonna go with?
We will. Regardless, we will be putting the 24-inch pipe in. It's just whether we are allowed to jack and bore, or whether we have to open cut, trench the pipe in.
So we'll be able to hear that?
That's correct. Yep.
Well, we need to make a decision on that at the next board meeting, or will you present, again at the next board meeting, to the board as a whole, and then later? Is there like a timeframe that you're gonna need to make this decision?
Nope, there'll be, similar with the other projects, so we'll create ASIs or MSIs based off the plan review comments. And then, once that's approved by the state, then we'll be able to issue that through as a change order. And then, we'd be reviewing it as a change order, just like the other projects before me.
I think one of the interesting comments to make is, you know, that storm sewer line's about 10 feet below finished floor. So, when we talk about means and methods of how to install it, if there's an alternative method, it will be beneficial, well, just for the fact of how deep the excavation is, so.
Yeah.
So, I think that's good for everyone to realize.
No other questions? We can go on to the Harrison change event?
I'll keep moving. We can do that.
Yeah, so if you see in your packets on the slide here, we were bringing a, we brought to the oversight meeting that we had previously, a change order to BCI construction for PR4, which included additional window shades for two rooms. The gym flooring referenced is for the alternate that was accepted during the bidding phase. That's for the gym flooring expansion onto that alternate, as well as some changes to, some sinks to meet ADA requirements required by the state. And then, the structural changes were due to some requests for informations by the contractor for some unforeseen conditions, one being at the stage had a plaster ceiling. When we took that down, we realized we needed some structural modifications. That couldn't have been seen until that ceiling was down. So, at the oversight meeting, we reviewed the $60,000. I will continue to work with BCI since then. What we are bringing today is $51,303. So we were able to drop just shy of $9,000 off that pricing since when we met. So that, that's kind of a quick overview, if anybody has any questions on that. But we do, we are less than what you see on the slide itself.
Any questions at all?
So, for our action later, and are we gonna change that amount on there?
Yes. Yeah, it's $51,303.
Okay.
And Kyle's done a great job of trying to get that worked out with BCI. And, you know, some of the momentum, we've lost some momentum because of some of these change orders we got behind on. So Kyle's done a really great job of bringing the team together and getting some positive momentum at Harrison. So, you'll start to see some things really happen over the next couple of weeks.
The Harrison gym is a full-size gym, the new one, is that correct?
Correct. Okay. Real quickly, things are going great out at the new Baxter Elementary. I'm actually very happy with Al Raico and the performance of the contractors on site. Very, very good things are happening out there. I can bring that back, sorry. Going too fast for Bob, I think. There you go, there's pictures. But, great progress. Can't say enough good things. Forestview Middle School, we're substantially complete, still waiting for our metal panels to arrive. Looking at the end of November for the arrival date for those. Harrison Elementary, we've been working hard, just get good momentum on that site. Right now, we are, what are we doing today? We are working on wrapping up some, just some minor structural steel items, and we are getting ready to pour some concrete. So, I believe that by the end of the week, I think we're gonna be completely poured out?
Not the end of the week. We'll have, we're starting brick. If you've driven by there, within the last day, they've been putting brick on the new kitchen area, working on mechanical plumbing roughens within the kitchen and there in the gym. Starting lower-level concrete. There's technically four levels within Harrison, the addition. Lower level, the admin area, first level, second level. We'll start Wednesday with our first pour lower level. We have heat in there with the temperatures. We're having some issues getting concrete. So, we're actually enclosing the building and pumping heat in there right now, which will allow us to continue pouring. I'm hoping end of next week is when we have all the composite decks poured, you know, weather and timing. But they're prepping for all that, putting all our structural in there and getting ready to go, so really good progress there.
How many guys on site today?
We had some supplemental labor. We probably had 25-plus out there today, which was a big change out there from what we've experienced out there recently. So, like Damian said, we're getting to the point, we get these slabs in, it's all hands on deck. Let's get some interior walls in, mechanical roughens, and get this thing going.
And the good thing is, once we get enclosed and get the concrete slabs poured, we have control of our destiny a bit. And we're gonna, you know, it's a lot of space, but we can make some really big strides, so. So we're looking forward to getting that back on track. Nisswa Elementary, continuing roofing at the classroom additions. You know, this is the first full week where we don't have any rain in the forecast. So, let's just keep that going, going forward. That's probably been our biggest challenge, is just the roofing. I don't know, Tom, what your brother's up to over there, but it's gotta be painful with all the rain we've had. So, we're looking forward to getting things dried in. Lowell and Riverside Elementary, conditional use permit is scheduled for, we're meeting with the city on Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Get our COP reviewed, get ready to, for submission in early November. We have our architectural, we have our architectural documents in hand now. We're gonna be scheduling meetings for Lowell Riverside and Garfield and Baxter Elementary with the core groups and do page turns. And we're getting ready to present those projects over the next two leadership and oversight committee meetings and the next two school board meetings. Okay, any questions?
I have a quick question over at the Baxter Elementary School, or the new school. The, what's the name of the street that's going right in front of the grade school? What's gonna be that?
New name?
Jasperwood.
Jasperwood, okay. And then, the street that's existing, just to the east? Ironwood? So, is Ironton gonna flow into Jasperwood? Right now, it looks like it's a pretty hard turn to the right to get on to Jasperwood. So will that slow up traffic when they're coming off of Ironwood to drop kids off on Jasperwood? Or will it, I guess initially, I thought it'd more flow into it, but right now, it looks like it's a hard...
So you're knocking northeast side up to new Jasperwood?
Yeah, coming off Ironwood. It's more of a 90-degree?
That is a 90-degree for...
It is, huh? Okay. So cars will have to slow down, then?
Not the actual stop sign, intersection, you understand?
Oh, okay.
It'll be stop sign controlled on Jasperwood and the east side, not on Ironwood.
Not on where?
Well, that's Mapleton that would actually run on the north, around the east side of those, so that will not be stopped. It'll be the intersection east and west of that.
The one closest to Highland Seating? That'll be a stop sign?
Yes.
That'll be a stop sign?
Tammy has a question.
I just, I don't think it's gonna be a big intersection, because once they, you know, start taking, we said, Ironwood, or is it Mapleton South, or I think that one's called along there, then you're coming in on Jasperwood, and then you're still gonna come in on the parent drop-off loop. So no one's gonna be stopping or pausing out there when they exit that and onto Jasperwood. They're just gonna be flowing. Then they're gonna come into our entrance, which is pretty well-designed and pretty long for stacking, and that's where they would stop and slow down. So I wouldn't think it would be unusual, because it's kind of two layers in before they're gonna start slowing down and dropping off.
And turn lanes into our site as well, off of Jasperwood.
So it's not gonna be a hard, so will it be a stop sign there, or not, turning right off of?
Off of Jasperwood?
Yeah. I mean, turning...
It will be a right angle.
Okay. My concern is, will it be backed up from where you turn off of into Jasperwood to where the roundabout is on Highland Seating?
I personally, I mean, can I, I personally can't imagine that, Charles, because it's far enough away. By the time you get on that road, you've got a ways to drive yet to get back there. And then, you're gonna come in on the actual parent drop-off loop, which is a one-way with two lanes for stacking. It's so far away from that to be backed out on that road. I can't imagine it doing that.
Yeah, I think you'd be 1,300 feet beyond our turn lane.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Damian, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
At the new Baxter School, there's a large dirt pile. Do you have plans for that?
The black dirt? Justin?
Yeah, that's topsoil. That'll be spread around the site.
Okay, is that all black dirt, or? The reason I ask, there's a community member that said if you need to get rid of it, they have a way for a project in Brainerd?
Topsoil, they intend to put it back. I can, I think it's stabilized right now, if it's been seeded.
Oh. Okay.
I will talk to the contractor, see if they think there's gonna be some extra, but by knowledge, there's not.
There's not? Okay.
This stuff's pretty, it's pretty high.
Is that their property?
It would be, yes. It would be their property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Justin.
Okay, next up, the approval for the minutes for the regular school board meeting on October 14th. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Also move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have Ashley Aderbitson. She's gonna come talk with us a little bit. Welcome.
Evening. I'm the Native American Education Coordinator for the district, and I'm just here tonight to give a little update on the Native American education program. So, just an overview of our program, a little refresher. There's myself as the Native American Education Coordinator, and Crystal Sam as our student liaison as far as staffing goes. We are funded through American Indian Education Grants through the state and federal governments. And our program serves, directly serves Native American students pre-K through 12th grade throughout the district, but also is a really comprehensive program. So we work throughout many different areas of the district, beyond just that direct student support. And then, we also work very closely with our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee in preparing our program plan each year. We take a look at some of the goals and recommendations that have been put forward by our parent advisory committee as we kind of craft our plan each year. So that's what I wanted to share with you this evening, was some of the things we're working on for the 2019-20 school year. So first off is staff development. We had Anton Troyer. He is a professor of Ojibwe at Imidji State University. And he came back in June for an in-service day and presented to our certified staff. We have an upcoming, it's Minnesota McCochay Curriculum Training, and that's actually a week from today. Myself and Crystal, and then our sixth-grade social studies teachers will be going to this training. And this curriculum is really designed to work within the curriculum we're already using. It just kind of digs a little deeper on some of those standards around Dakota history, culture, and philosophy. So that will be, we're excited for that week from today. As far as events go, we have quite a few here, so I'll just touch on a couple. We had our backpack event in August, and that is an event we've held three times now. And students are, in our program, are invited to come. They pick out a backpack. We have quite a variety. We have school supply list, and then they pick out school supplies for the upcoming school year. And we served about 142 students at that event this year. So, because it's been so successful, we hope that we can continue to offer that in our program. Our Waduko Dadiwag Powel will take place at CLC in, on the Brainerd campus on the 15th of November this year. And this is Waduko Dadiwag, meaning we are helping one another. So this is our local school district and local community college partnering together, creating that bridge for students and just supporting and celebrating our Native American students and Native American culture. And we invite community members to come participate in that event as well. Couple other cultural events throughout the year. We have a graduation event in the spring where we celebrate the accomplishment of another academic year. We pay special recognition to our senior graduates at that time. And then, college tours we offer. We have three of them this year. One will be on Wednesday. We'll be going with 9th through 12th graders to the U of M campus in Minneapolis. And then, visiting CLC in March, and it's to be determined on where we will visit in April. We're gonna survey students and see what they're interested in. And then, as far as just some student support, we have Chromebooks that we're offering families and students that are in need of some extra technological support. Something that's new this year that we've just kind of started with the idea, drafting up the ideas, creating some sort of a welcome bag, welcome kit, packet. We're kind of figuring out how we wanna do it. But something that we can give to students as they enroll in the district to just let them know about the program, who we are, and just kind of give recognition to that cultural piece as we invite them into the district. Summer reading materials, we've done that for the last three years, where we provide, like, there's a little tote bag that we have that has our logo on it, and students come and they pick out a variety of books to read over the school year. It's been really fun, and it just supports that summer reading over those three months when you can tend to leave the books in the backpack, right? And then, as far as school support, we offer testing rotation lessons. That's during star testing in the fall and the spring. star testing in the fall and the spring, um, students go through, in the elementary schools, they go through rotations during that time, and so we participate in the, that rotation, um, process and provide a cultural lesson to each one of the, the elementary schools, and then kind of change those lessons, um, as we work through one, we move on to another, if that makes sense. Um, and then a high school exhibit, we are, um, partnering with the Malax India Museum on bringing in some pieces that we can put out for a little exhibit or a display in the high school, and possibly we might be able to take that through to a couple other, um, schools as well, we're kind of in the works on that. And last but not least, um, some curriculum projects that we've been working on as well, more so on the K through four level, we've been working with, um, some teachers, one teacher in particular who has really taken on, um, a project of curriculum writing and Native American education, and, um, she's been working with us and, and the parent committee on, um, developing that, so that's some exciting work this year, so. Lot of information, short amount of time, but I wanted to get it all in there. Any questions for me?
Ashley, do we, and maybe you touched on it a little bit, but do we collaborate with the work you do with CLC, or maybe Charles can comment on that as well, is there a lot of collaboration between the high school and CLC?
Well, we have, um, the, the Powa, we collaborate, and then there's also, we're kind of talking about one of the other cultural events that we have, um, this year that will be new, we're talking about collaborating with CLC on that as well, so that would be two event collaborations.
How about, how about career, technical, um, college readiness, do we dive pretty deep with, with them, and, and again, connect maybe with CLC?
Besides?
Such a great opportunity, I, I would think, to do that.
Not, um, well, from my knowledge at least, not, not particularly with American Indian students, but I think where we're at right now, between the college and ISD one eighty-one, is really you're seeing the front end of a lot of that collaboration and partnership right now, so we're just beginning to, a lot of those doors are opening on both sides of those entities and beginning to realize what some of the, the benefits and what some of the possibilities are there. And quite honestly, even by you being the board, asking such a question kicks that door open even further, and that's significant, I appreciate that question, but, yeah, we're getting there, I know Tim has a few things in mind as well, um, down the road also.
We do visit, um, we have, last year and this year, we have plans to visit, I'm trying to remember if we did even the year before, um, but, um, they often will have cultural films or, um, presenters at CLC, so we use that as an opportunity to bring students, this year there's a film, um, that will be shown, and we're plan, in March, and, and we're planning on bringing students there, and then at that time, um, we'll eat lunch on campus, so they kind of get that experience of eating lunch there, and then just do a short tour. And last year when we did do the tour, there was, we did look into some of those skilled trade opportunities for students too, because a lot of the, um, college tours we've been on are the larger university, um, but just making sure that we're showcasing all the different options for students post-secondary, but, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so there's a lot of potential there in terms of creating some of that hardware between, between CLC and ISD one eighty-one, as it relates to programming such as technical and that sort of thing.
Good to see.
As it relates to American Indian students.
Is B S U one of your options too, as far as your college tours, 'cause I know they do so much with collaborating with, um, local high schools and such with, um, Native American education, and, um, like Dr. Anton Truer who came, you know, he's become really a, a great friend, and so I was just curious if that was one of your, you know, you said it's to be determined as far as your third tour that you would go to a college.
We, um, visited B S U last year.
Oh, last year, okay.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, it was a really good experience, we went to, they have an American Indian Resource Center there, it's a beautiful building, they make food for students, it's really cool, so, we were able to go in there and eat lunch and, um, visit with, and just kind of, um, visit with some of the people who work there and see what supports were in place, um, and then also just do a campus tour, and that was the first time I had been to B S U, but, um, I really enjoyed it, so, yeah, we'll see, we're, we've done U M D, St. Cloud State, um, Minnesota Morris, so we'll see where students are hoping to go this spring.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions at all for me?
Thank you for your report, Ashley.
Thank you very much.
So much.
Bye-bye. Okay, new business, we have some action items, first up is the, the change event that Damien just talked to us about there at Harrison, and we're gonna change the amount to up to fifty-one thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved. Man. Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval of the transfer of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents from the General Fund to the Community Service Fund, and Marcy's gonna explain that a little bit. We do this, I think, every year.
Correct, um, so this is for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we're closing out, and we do need board approval to cover the cost of the early childhood screenings, so the state does give us aid, but it is not enough to cover the amount of our salary, um, fringe and supplies for the screenings, so this is just a transfer covering for eighteen, nineteen, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents, um, and then I did put a note in there that when we were planning this next year's budget, nineteen, twenty, that was eliminated, it's not a required transfer, it's an optional one, so, um, looking for board approval tonight, but you will not see it next year for nineteen, twenty. Are there any questions on that?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first from Director Nelson, and a second from Director Blackland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the second and final reading for the MSBA Model Policy Revisions, and we looked at these two weeks ago, and.
There have been, no one has brought anything to my attention since.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I so move approval of the final, second and final reading of the MSBA model policies presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nystrom. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now the approval of the nomination for the Brainerd School Board to be represented, represented on the Sourcewell Board. Is there anybody who's interested in taking this spot, or?
What it would be is Sourcewell, um, periodically looks for board members that are willing to serve on their Board of Directors, and this year in region, uh, sub-region three, there is an opening for a Board of Education member, and so we have an option if there is a board member from the school district that would like to serve on this committee, that what you do is say, I would be interested in running for this position, and then, um, throughout region five, they would vote on it, um, to see who would be selected for that position. It is not something that any board member has to do, but if you're interested in serving on Sourcewell Board, it would be wonderful to have a representative from Brainerd on that board, and also with all the funding streams and such that Sourcewell helps us out with, with, uh, grants, with the innovation pieces, um, you know, I could see where it could be really a, a beautiful synergy to have a representative on that board, but again, we don't need to run anyone for it either, um, because it is a time commitment. Certainly, one meeting a month plus any, um, extra activities that Sourcewell may have that you might wanna get, uh, interested in seeing, uh, some of the professional development and such, um, that's being offered.
How long is the commitment?
Three years.
Three years.
It's a three-year commitment, yep. And the other thing is we don't have to vote on it tonight, um, the application would have to be in by December sixteenth, I believe, so it's something that we could think about over the next two weeks as well.
Do we actually have to approve the director if someone wants to submit?
The way it looked to me, it, it did look like the Board of Education would approve that we would have a candidate, that we would move forward for nomination for Board of Directors at Sourcewell.
Do you know the time of the day of their board meeting?
I don't. I couldn't find that also.
We've never had anyone on.
We haven't.
'Cause I might, I mean, I might be willing to be interested in that, but it would, it would honestly determine when.
Why don't we just let some time pass here, and if somebody's interested, we get back to Superintendent Larson, and we can put it on the next agenda if it was of interest.
Are there any other questions that you would like answered prior to moving forward? Are there any other thing, questions that you as a board have that I can look into?
For Sourcewell?
Right, so the time of the date of the meetings, um, the amount of commitment?
I guess, yeah, it'd be other commitment of other meetings to, to be in.
Okay.
And then the time of the meetings.
What about lunch?
It doesn't say.
There's great food, let me tell you, there's great food, always at Sourcewell.
I like all those work requirements.
I can't, I, donuts aren't allowed at home, this is the only way I get my donuts.
And now she knows.
Let me find some of that information and I'll send it out to you and make sure that you have it, and we'll put it back on the board agenda if, if there's anyone interested.
Do you have to campaign for it if your name is on the?
I don't think so, I think we just submit an application and send it in, and then you vote all the districts.
We'll, we'll vote you in.
Okay, we'll just, um, because of a lack of a motion, we'll just postpone that till the next meeting and we'll see, go from there.
I'll get you some, um, curriculum report, Mr. Murtha.
October twenty-eighth, the District Advisory Committee met for the first time this year. Uh, in the agenda, the purpose of the meeting was an organizational meeting, so we covered such items as the purpose of the advisory committee and its role to convey community beliefs and opinions as they relate to curriculum and staff development issues. Uh, we emphasized that the committee is composed of parents, teachers, administrators, and community members who participate in a process to review and improve instruction, curriculum, and assessment in the district. As part of the organizational meeting, we reviewed the World's Best Workforce legislation and the framework for goal setting that's implied by World's Best Workforce, and looked at how we try to fulfill the promise of those goals with a continuous improvement process, the curriculum process, and the staff development process, so those are the three levers we pull in order to make sure that we're fulfilling the promise of World's Best Workforce. We dug a little deeper this year into some of the nuts and bolts of the staff development process, talking about the four areas of our other key responsibilities is ensuring teacher relicensure. Our next meeting is on November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at which time we will review the district achievement summary, which has been presented here already this fall, and the principals will be sharing their site plans with their site representatives. Uh, we'll also have presentations from the high school on college and career readiness and high school graduation, that's the update.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Next up, the business report.
I thought he was gonna go longer. Uh, financial report is in your packet, um, just wanted to note that when you look at the percentages in the fiscal year-to-date, um, I always take out the construction funds and the debt service funds because last year was kind of a unique year, so if you take those out, the fiscal year-to-date percent is about thirteen point three seven percent, and then last year it was twelve point nine five, so it's up about point four two percent, nothing alarming, nothing to note. Um, had some, the auditors here last week, they're gonna come back next week to wrap some stuff up, uh, hopefully I will have a update for you for last year at the next meeting. Is there any questions?
Can you go through the timeline of the audits, um, what the plan is and when they'll be presenting the audit to the Board of Education?
Um, so they are here doing their audit work, field work, um, and then they will, hopefully, they try to get in on the December board meeting, it just all depends on how, what schools they have scheduled already, so hopefully we can get a presentation from the actual auditors in December. I believe it got pushed off to January last year 'cause of her schedule, but hopefully we can get something in, on, on the calendar for December.
Sounds good. Thank you, Marcy. Superintendent's report.
Just a few things, um, got a big day on Thursday and for the school districts, so we have Halloween, and so we're gonna have trick-or-treaters all over the school, so if you get a chance to stop by some of the schools, it'll be kind of a fun time. Also, I wanted to update everyone that, um, Project Oversight, we will be having a meeting on November fifth, uh, here at Wesbie, and, um, at eight AM, um, and we will be, uh, looking into more depth as far as the Minnesota Dolly Plumbing Pipe Update, um, that the I C S representatives brought forward today, and so, um, hopefully we can have a lot more information at that time so we can get that information and present it at the next board meeting. Speaking of the next board meeting, uh, because of Veterans Day, which is the eleventh, and I will be sending out a list of Veterans Day programs that will be taking place throughout our district, that is Monday, November, February eleventh, so the next board me- meeting is scheduled for November thirteenth at noon, and that is a regular meeting because of the organizational meeting in January, um, we set that date already to be Wednesday, the thirteenth of November at noon. Um, that being said, uh, we have lunch with Lane at Harrison on November twelfth, and, um, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And if there be no other business tonight, we can, oh.
Before we, um.
Oh, sorry.
Adjourn, would it be possible, when we were looking at all of the, the building constructions, we had two presentations from solar panel companies, and I know even when we were looking at purchasing the, um, property for the new Baxter, we looked at some additional land with the idea of putting a, a solar farm there, and I'm wondering if we could dust those presentations off and maybe have Damien, um, at, at one of our future Oversight Committee meetings, if we could take another look at that?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I think, appreciate Andrew and the, and the group being here today to, to, to bring that forward again, um, because I know we spent a lot of time looking into that.
Yeah, we did, that's right.
Um, if we could bring that forward again sometime in the next couple months at the Oversight Committee.
I think that's a great idea, um, because we've also talked about it at the high school and potentially at Riverside, um, not knowing where the pluses and minuses are, and with Reed here too, um, that might be a really great project for us to bring forward and to open up again, but, yeah, I know that we've had lots of presentations about solar, um, and moving forward for sustainable energy, and so I think that's a wonderful idea, so we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
If I, since I don't sit typically on the Oversight, I would love to see some of those as well since with my newness to the board.
Why don't we plan a presentation to the full board, um, about some of the highlights that we've, that we've learned about solar and what the possibilities could be in the future? And Reed, do you and Damien think we could pull something together?
We can have the information.
Okay, that'd be great.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up again, so, yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A second from Director Blackland. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.